I will call the Wednesday, April 23 special session of the Planning Commission to Order at 6:01. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Sheriff, councilwoman Holter.
Present.
Commissioner Sean Brendan.
Here.
Commissioner Jamie Porter.
Present.
Did we hear from Ms. Nichols?
No, and she was here yesterday and picked up her packet.
Oh. Okay. Will everyone join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I can't tell.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our next item of business is consideration of the agenda. I don't have any changes. Lila, did you have anything that needed to be changed?
No.
Anybody else? If not...
Motion to approve.
One second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Next item of business is consideration of the consent agenda, which is the Planning Commission meeting minutes from March 27. Basically outlining the changes to which we agreed in our last meeting. Changes to Chapter 155, that is. Any questions and comments?
Motion to approve.
One second. Thank you. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item of business is announcements and correspondence. So you will see in your packets copies of the City Council meeting minutes from March 19th and April 2nd. Any questions or comments on those? Just for discussion. If not, the next item is an announcement of the ODOT flight, which will be June 14th this year. Does everyone know what the ODOT flight thing is? Can you do something to you?
Don't they practice like flying and landing on the water?
Yeah, they practice delivering the emergency supplies by plane. And they fly into Logan Lake and they fly into Silk Coast. It's also an opportunity for the emergency ham radio relay system to practice their skills. Last year, the local radio group had a station down at the Boadog. They get to see if, what kind of reception they can get. They get to practice internet communications by hand. It's very interesting. So you get to hear sometimes the pilots talking. They talk about what kind of supplies they're bringing in. There's usually a group of people from certain other places there. It's just a dry run for an emergency. It's kind of cool. I was there last year and I'll probably be there this year with the radio group. Anyway, if you don't have anything to do on that day, it's kind of fun to do. Especially if you have kids that might be interested in seeing airplanes landing on the water. Anyway. The next item is the Spring Coastal Planners Network Meeting. It is going to be on the 30th, which is next Friday. That's going to be on...
Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have my calendar attuned to the wrong page. So sorry.
Thursday.
Okay, next Thursday. Lila, have you received an agenda yet?
From that, no, I have not.
Okay. So Lila has provided the link for registration if anyone is interested in attending. As I have said before, I've attended a number of these. They're, as it says, sponsored by DLCD and Ocean and Coastal Services Division of DLCD. They are basically updates to current and recently passed legislation, land use decisions. Sometimes they are applicable to our area, but the last few years, not so much, except for housing updates. Still, if you have time, they are interesting. So you can log in. There's no charge for that, is there, Lila?
No.
Okay. And usually after the meeting, there is an online presentation available. It's either going to be a PowerPoint or a recording of the video or some combination of both. And perhaps if it is interesting, we can take a look at that later at another meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, moving on to new business.
Actually, can I add one?
Yes, please. I'm so sorry, Lila.
No, that's totally fine. I just wanted to, I didn't put it on there, so it's my bad. But we are having the Estate Administration and Planning webinar, well, seminar really, tomorrow here at 1:00. There's going to be two attorneys, local attorneys. So if you are available and want to join us tomorrow at 1:00, that would be great.
That should be interesting. I wish I could go. I have a prior engagement, unfortunately. I have a very big question to ask.
Well, I do have their information, so...
You think they could answer a question if I emailed it?
Yes, do that and I'll ask. Yeah. And I can give you their agenda and their PowerPoint presentation.
Oh.
I have them printed if you're interested in that, too.
Yes, I might.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now, new business. Scheduling the next Planning Commission meeting, which would regularly be...
May 22nd.
May 22nd?
Mm-hmm.
Sean?
Oh, please.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, for having me. So, second week.
Thursday of Liberty Weekend. Memorial. Thank you, Memorial.
Yeah.
The 22nd?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that's my last practice for competition week of travel.
Okay.
And when do the 21st?
21st, Jamie?
Mm-hmm.
Wednesday?
Mm-hmm. It's okay with me on the 21st, too. So let's change May's meeting date to the 21st, on May, Wednesday, 6:00 p.m.
Back in again? But then by town.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Would be flexible, would you have to schedule?
Absolutely. I don't know exactly what will be on the agenda. If you have any thoughts, please email them or call Lila and let her know anything special. We'll have essentially, I think, finished our Chapter 155 work, at least for now. So perhaps we could, at that meeting, talk about the next steps for Chapter 155. We also might want to think about next projects or tasks for the Planning Commission. Do we have any conditional use applications or anything in the works that you are aware of?
Not at the moment.
Okay. So we could either take a look at continuing with our DLCD online training. We can take a look at, dare I mention it? The other chapters, the other chapters of Title 15. There's flood damage prevention, soil erosion control, and vegetation removal and general provisions. None of those have been addressed for years. It may be worth it just to take a quick look and see if there's anything that needs to be updated, reworded, and that kind of thing.
I think you're erosion control and other things for topic discussion today.
That sounds good. We might be able to do that, so consider that for the agenda. Maybe I can touch base with you later, Lila. They're all short, verisimely. Nothing at all by Chapter 155. And none of these require the full public hearing notice to DLCD and that kind of thing if we create ordinances to change any of those. I don't check out. Okay. Next. Moving on to unfinished business. Hopefully, we're winding up the Chapter 155 remand from the City Council.
Sheriff.
Allow me to review this here for just one moment. So in the, in the minutes from last month, of course, we have a pretty detailed record of the changes to which we agreed. In your packet, after the Coastal Planners Network Meeting announcement is... A recap that I created for you all of the ADU draft language to which we agreed. And I thought we would take just a minute to review that and make sure that says what we wanted to say. As you will recall, you are going to insert this language somewhere on page 57 of 268. What page was that? I'm sorry. 57. So what we did was change 220, what was bed and breakfast language, to ADU. And then we were going to insert these three paragraphs. So... Anybody have any concerns or questions about the language?
No. I think it's good. Covering my primary content?
Okay.
Can we do it with waste?
Jamie? No, I'm good. Okay. All right, so that's simply a confirmation for you, Lila and staff, that that's the language that we will put in there. So then, while we were on page 57, we also discussed accessory buildings at our last meeting and we decided that they can be built before permits for the primary dwelling have been obtained. And so having decided that, I thought we should take a look at the language that's left here. It has been edited a number of times, but let's take a look, make sure that it's going to flow correctly the way that you envisioned it. Because both of you had some concerns about accessory dwellings, as I recall. So it's kind of hard to read. Do you want me to read it, though?
Yes.
You don't have very many notes. Mine is all scribbled. Okay, I'll try. So accessory buildings in the residential zone include detached garages, sheds, workshops, greenhouses, and similar structures, is what we agreed to. No accessory building in the residential zone may have a kitchen facility. Accessory buildings may not be cited prior to the issuance of a residential building permit. A building permit may not be, hold on. May not be issued for an accessory building until the certificate of occupancy for the primary residence has been issued. But I think somewhere in there, we thought to put in that the accessory building may be constructed concurrently with the primary building or primary residence.
Concurrently, that isn't what we were talking about. They didn't have to do that.
Correct. Correct, so...
Concurrently is not.
So apparently, we need to make some adjustments to this language?
Yeah, that whole section right there.
Okay.
The blue line.
Open to comments. Can you see that, Sean?
Yeah.
I think that we just, accessory buildings are allowed and we define like the canon exceed, like, dimension-wise, what is, how big is an accessory building?
Okay, hold on.
But we, the discussion then said any building of a certain size that requires a building permit, so that was where we kind of got worried. We got hand-tied on that one. So I think what, you can have 200 square feet without a permit, right? So we're okay with that. And then, I don't remember if we said having a kitchen or not, I didn't.
Well, the reason that it currently says no kitchen facility is because then it could be possibly construed as an ADU and we wanted to keep those totally separate.
Got it. Good. That's fine.
So...
So we're open for a shed or workshop or greenhouse prior to the primary residence? No kitchen? I don't know. Or, Penzel, what was the language once we crossed off guest houses and similar structures? What was that language that you had in there?
The next sentence was, "No accessory building in the residential zone may have a kitchen facility."
What language? There was something that you said after the word greenhouses. Because you had crossed out guest houses and similar structures.
In my notes, I have greenhouses and similar structures.
And similar, okay. So it's just crossing off that, okay?
Just crossing off guest houses?
Okay.
Okay. A building permit may not be issued for an accessory building until the...
So that's the thing, that we didn't need it, like, you don't need a building permit to have an accessory building under 200 square feet. That's redundant. That's like a unnecessary...
If it's under 200.
All right, so that's the definition of our accessory building. So... Or an unpermitted accessory building shall be underneath 200 square feet.
And something over, that's where that second part comes in, something over 200 should be limited in size, not to exceed the total square feet of the primary residence. And then it does say exceptions, buildings 200 square feet or less are exempt. That's just from materials and style.
So at some point in our many discussions about this, we had deleted that entire second paragraph.
Okay.
There were many objections from citizens during public hearings about using similar or the same materials.
Yeah.
And height of the building, several kinds of things.
Yeah.
So...
Okay.
It seems like we need to delete the suggested sentence up in that first paragraph that says, "accessory buildings may not be cited prior to the issuance of a residential building permit." Or we need to modify that somehow.
I think modify, because wouldn't we want that to apply if it was larger than 200 square feet?
Are there two separate issues? An accessory building that's 200 square feet or less and one that's larger?
I mean, I don't know. I would think.
So we do call a shop an accessory building, right? And so if I have a workshop that I built first...
Yeah, you're right.
So a lot of people...
I would find with the shop on someone's property prior to their residence.
I know a lot of people that build a workshop first and then they live in their workshop. They get that built first and...
Which is okay, as long as they were showing that the certificate of occupancy has been issued. Or, Penzel, what's your thoughts?
Okay, so one thought is that, I believe we agreed last time, that the accessory building, and we didn't discuss the size, could be constructed prior to the residential building, whether or not there's a certificate of occupancy issued, which means the residence is completed. So it seems like this last sentence, where it says, "The building permit may not be issued for an accessory building until the CFO for the primary has been issued," we need to delete that.
Okay.
Right, Sean? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
They want people to be able to put things on their property. If I land, they want to put an accessory building, a shed or whatever, store kayaks or whatever, they should be able to do that. So we just need to wordsmith it so that it flows in a way that says, okay, if you're going to build an accessory, this is how we define it to be. You're allowed to build things under 200 square feet without a permit. And if you have an accessory building over 200 square feet, then you have to submit a plan and get your building permits. That's what we talked about, like, it has to have a plot, a plot plan or whatever, a coast with a hole. That's my recollection, my recollection of the conversation that we had last time.
Okay. So then... So the sentence before that, that says, "accessory buildings may not be cited prior to the issuance of a residential building permit." Should that be something like, accessory buildings 200 square feet or less may be built prior to the issuance of a residential building permit?
Are exempt or may be.
Oh. What we could do is leave that sentence and then say, "accessory buildings 200 square feet or less are exempt from this provision," referring back to the building permit for anything over 200 square feet. Would that work?
Yeah.
I think that's cleaner.
Yeah.
It's good job.
But that was your idea, Sean.
No, that was you taking a piece of my idea.
Okay, so I have a question. Sorry to interrupt, but...
Please do.
So, you know, I have a piece of land and I put up a shed and then I want to start building my house and I realize that, you know, I need a well and a septic. Should we not have a plan before? I don't know. Just an idea.
It's 200 square feet, so you bulldoze that shed and then you move it.
You make another one? Yeah. Okay.
Because it's 200 square feet or less, that's an easy tear-down.
It's a pretty small...
It's like my...
I'm just thinking that maybe, do we want to know what they're doing?
So, quite frankly, that original was my concern, that original idea, that if you're going to build anything at all on your property, you should come in with a site plan, even if it's that accessory building that's small and you are planning to put your residential home on there as well. But that has not been the consensus of other people's opinions, I don't think.
And so aren't they going to blame the city that they have to, you know, destroy something because we didn't tell them that they, you know, had a...
But I think that's part of your due diligence as the property owner. The city shouldn't have to be there to tell you what to do. I think some people threw up hands. I think from what I remember, community member saying was, it's just more city oversight, oversight, where you could have a tough shed, sturdy plastic, 200 square foot, that you really think the city needs to know about it? Is it just if you build it rather than it's assembled? I mean, where is that line?
True.
Yeah.
So...
You can put as recommended that you, you can put a recommendation in there. It's not a requirement, but it's strongly recommended. We can put a rider in there that says something like that. Sure, yeah.
I mean, I guess you tell me, like, the benefits the city knowing, because to me, I wouldn't want to know every time somebody put a 200 square foot or less structure on their property.
True, but I'm just thinking, you know, okay, there are some people out there that are not going to pay attention to the fact that they may not know, you know, they've never lived in Oregon, rural Oregon, they might not know, especially in this area, that they're going to need a well and a septic. They're just thinking, I have, now that I bought this piece of property, I'm going to put, you know, my accessory building there and then later, you know, I'm going to come in with my plans and I'm going to find out that the plans that I have, I can't use.
Correct. Yeah. And I'm going to say, when you bought, I mean, that's just me, and then tell me your ideas, I'm going to say, you should have looked. I mean, we're talking, what's 200 square foot, Sean? 20 by 20? 10 by 10?
Yeah.
10 by 20.
10 by 20, so...
Yeah.
If you're not thinking that you'd have to put in well or septic on your bare land...
Just, yeah. A lot of people, I say a lot of people think that we have city water. I'm just, I hear it every single day.
Yes.
So, yeah, not everyone, I just don't know that everyone's going to know that.
I just feel like for our community that was against it, more so than some, I don't know. I'm wanting to, you know...
How are you not my feeling, what Jamie is thinking?
But listening to what our community wanted.
Do you need to know where my chicken coop is?
No.
Do you need to know where my chicken coop is?
No.
Do you need to know?
But if there's a, but if there's a reason that we should, I'd like to hear. I mean, I'm open to it, but to me, that is...
I mean, I can see, like, your argument is, like, is your chicken coop under drain field? No, because I climbed ahead on that, like, my drain field, but I have a structure if I built it.
Well, or, you know, does it need setbacks? I mean, is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Mine?
A lot of that, because there's a lot of...
So, Lila and I seem to be more on the same page than you guys on this.
That's okay.
This is why we're having a discussion enough, but that's the point. I see the pros and the cons, right? Because like you, like Lila was saying, like, some people don't know, like, some people, and I know people...
A lot of people don't know.
I know some people that built their structure on top of their drain field.
Because they don't know.
They don't know. They're like, oh. They don't know, they're like, oh, you have pipes, you can't put any heavy structure on top of that. And there, so you have to, you have to, another thing is enforcement. Or do you really have the enforcement to go check all these auxiliary?
No.
You could encourage it, right? We don't have code enforcement, so why are we going to?
When this topic came up and we removed this, what was comments from the community on it? You know, regardless of any of our feelings, what did our community have in their feelings?
In general, they should be allowed to put their accessory building wherever they wanted to, whenever they wanted to. As long as it met setbacks, of course, but several people suggested over the course of the revisions that we've made that it wasn't somehow fair to have to come into the city with your full plans and pull your residential building permits before you can build an accessory building, which would house your tools, your heavy equipment, if you were going to build your house yourself. That was a huge objection. And then we had a person who wanted to put a building on his property and wasn't going to put a residence on there, so. In general, people thought it was overreaching to have requirements for the accessory building, particularly if it's a small one.
I think if it's over 200 square feet, you need a building permit in the city. You have to follow building code and there needs to be a block plan. That is, I think that is a reasonable thing. But if it's under 200 square feet, I think you can put it where you want it because that's something that's easily moved. Tearing that thing down, yeah, it sucks, you just made a big, you made a building mistake. Like, how many people have built a house and made a mistake? Then they just go, that's the cost of learning, right? If you're going to go like, oh, this thing is in where my drain field needs to be, oh shit, that was an expensive mistake. That's part of what Jamie said, you're too tilted. If you're going to go take on a project. You have to.
So we so far are leaving in the sentence that says accessory buildings may not be cited prior to the issuance of a residential building permit. We just added the exception for buildings that are 200 square feet or less. Should we say accessory buildings greater than 200 square feet in size may not be cited prior to the issuance of a building permit? Or should we say something like accessory buildings greater than 200 square feet in size must be require a building permit and building or site plans, something like that? Is that, would that be applicable or correct?
How do you feel about that?
I feel okay, I think that's closer to what would seem reasonable. People then would have to come into the office. The question could be asked, okay, you're putting your building here. Have you considered where you're going to put, are you planning to build a house? Have you considered where your water source is or your drain field?
That's part of that conversation.
It would require a bit of a consultation, education.
Does your, does your building have water? Does your building have septic? Because you, the only restriction that you set in this is that you can't have a kitchen. A kitchen is a stove. So that by our definition, they could put water, they could put power, they could put toilet in their accessory building, right? You almost have an ADU, but not, because there's no kitchen. That's the only thing, the differentiation of that, right?
Yes.
So if you come in and it's over 200 square feet, you can ask them, okay, do you have water? Do you have power? Do you have, are you planning on having a bathroom in your accessory unit? Like, you're going to go do something here, you're storing tools and stuff like that, the person's building their own house, right? They're probably going to have a bathroom. So they need to know where their septic's going to be. They need to know where their wells going to be, that requires a site plan. Like, this is where the residence is going to be, or I'm not going to, but I'm just going to have this thousand-foot shop to keep my equipment on my lot, but I am not have a toilet. Great, you can have that as long as you have a septic.
So if we modify that one sentence a little bit to say accessory buildings greater than 200 square feet in area may not be built unless a site plan and building permit has been issued, would that be correct?
So. Is that what you're hoping for?
Well, I think it gives, I think it raises awareness to a person who wants to build a shop that if it's going to be greater than 200 feet in size, they want to put electricity and water in, they're going to have to get an electrical permit, they're going to have to get a permit for the building, they're going to have to know where their water is coming from. If they want to put a bathroom in there, they're going to have to have a septic facility. It gets them started down the path of learning the quirky, excuse me, quirkiness of Dune City's septic and water routine, and I think it would help.
That's what we're here for.
So something under 200 square feet, I want to put a bathroom in.
Oh, Lila.
Called supporter body. I thought you needed a permit for pulling in or what?
I think that you do, do we need to say that? I, I don't know.
I think we're over, I think we're.
We're in a rattle.
Yeah.
We're in a rattle. I built a shed and I think the, if I remember right, when I was digging in to see what I was allowed to do, the 200 square feet exemption was strictly for a structural permit. It did not waive all permits, it was just a structural permit, we waived it under terms strictly.
So you're solely forming your electrical under 200?
Yep.
So do we need to say that then? Like, the exception is, you know, you're allowed a structural permit, you don't have to get a structural permit.
You could put that, but.
We could put that, because we, we, the exception is, I can read my shorthand. Accessories, buildings 200 square feet or less in area are exempt from building permits.
A structural building permit? If you specified that.
We could say that.
You could say structural, because if you're saying building permits, it's alluding to the other ones. But if you say is exempt from a structural building permit, but subject to others contingent on what's in there.
Okay, are exempt from the.
Somebody who wants to make a little pot around my house that needs water and power, then they need to get permits for that.
Okay. So they're exempt from the requirement for a structural building permit. Does that sound all right? Is there any law on accessory buildings here?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Are you good, Jamie?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Tom, did you get the language, Lila?
Okay.
All right. Okay. So that concludes the citizen input comments that we had during public hearings, et cetera. However, it was brought to my attention not too long ago that someone was concerned and has mentioned this and thinks that it's not been addressed about setbacks in the commercial zone. So before we say that we're finished with our portion of this for now, can we take a look at the commercial zone and the setbacks?
Let's do that.
Okay. Okay, so, community commercial zone starts on page 62. The first part is uses subject to review, which is a list of uses subject to review that require the conditional use permit. The next section, uses not allowed, building setbacks, so. So building setbacks are under requirements in general. This is very similar language, if not the same, as from our residential zone as far as depth and frontage.
I don't know when you're ready to jump in.
You want to?
Okay.
So on page 64, setback management. And there's a table with the setbacks, so. So the table contains the setbacks from the front yard, side yard, rear yard, and I believe this is where the person was concerned that the setbacks were inappropriate.
When, when was the business established or they re?
All of the businesses in Dune City have been here for over 50 years.
Okay, and so the person that who is bringing this to our attention is, so you're not going to be able to retroactively change this.
No.
So those businesses are grandfathered and established. Because you're not going to go to a business and say, oh, you've been doing this for 50 years, you want me to change.
But we can't do that, that's illegal.
Yeah, you can't do that, so.
Correct.
Any new business has to follow these parameters.
Yeah. Even older ones, because this is what's currently there, this isn't new.
Well, this is the parameters that we're, we haven't changed these, so they.
Correct, so this.
Any new businesses have to follow this, because this is the guide that we have. It's been in the code, this is.
So old ones have to follow this?
We don't know, I don't know when this was written. When was this table inserted, you'd have to go back and see that, which is, so if you have a business that's 50 years old. Let's see.
So the concern is that the structure setbacks are too great?
Yes. I can kind of see, now that I'm looking at it, would a commercial property actually have a front yard?
Well, they have an approach. Randy, you have to approach the business, so you call that a front yard. So where is the business, do we know what business we're talking about?
I don't think it would be appropriate to say.
Because the business wouldn't be.
Doesn't really matter, the concern is just in general that these setbacks are not what they should be for a business. So if you I'm trying to think of. Well, none of the businesses that I can think of in Dune City, and remember, there are only about 10 of them or 11, none of them have actual front yards, the space between, say, the business structure and their property line is parking.
Yeah, so that's, that's appropriate for a business.
I think it's the language of the front yard.
Perhaps it is just the language that's.
Because I'm thinking even in residential, you can't have a structure within 25 feet from the road, 10 feet from on the side.
Correct.
So that's the same as residential.
Correct.
I think for commercial, I think it's just saying side yard, front yard is where it's getting.
Money.
Are you saying that somebody needs 25 feet? A parking lot, a front yard building? I think the yard, the front, that wording is what's confusing or could be misinterpreted.
Is construed. Yes.
Yeah.
And so how would we correct that?
So the front of the property line, the so you say front yard, the area of the front of the property line, which could be front business parking, however, you want to, so yard, parking. I don't know, that is a great lawyer question.
Yeah, because not every business has parking, like right in front. So.
You're talking bed and breakfast, you're talking, like, a bed and breakfast could have a front yard and then side parking, so you're you're trying to genie and bottle everything, but.
So bed and breakfast is not in the commercial zone. Should we look and see if there is some language from another small city that we could compare with?
I would, I would like to, to look and see what their law and structure requirements are and how they word their setbacks.
Model code. Model code.
Okay, so that's one question that we'll look into and we can discuss that in a minute.
Okay.
Okay. I, I have malware code at home, I can look this up, and Lila, do you or Terry have time to look at another city or should I do that? I'm kind of, I'm kind of busy this month, so. Well, between staff and me, we'll kind of, we'll see what we can find out, okay? And we'll bring that back for discussion.
All right.
I think you're right, Jamie, I think the word yard is a bit confusing in a commercial zone, so maybe.
You got me on this one?
Okay. All right, so we'll bring that back.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see how others word it, because that definitely needs to be changed, I just don't know what it should read.
Verbiage.
I don't know either.
So we'll bring that back.
Okay, okay.
Ask my brother, he's a lawyer, how would you say this?
Ask your brother, Sean.
Lawyer, tell me what we could do, that means a conundrum.
Okay, one more thing to address.
Karen, what we got?
Excuse me. So, the next item then is citizen input. Ms. Jackson, are you signed in?
Yes, I am. You know, just, you know, responding to some of the things that I'm talking about. Some of the issues you were talking about that were citizen concerns were actually brought up by council members themselves. And I get your meetings kind of mixed up, because I try to go all of, all of yours, all the council meetings. And I'm kind of surprised at some of the things that are happening today, because I thought these things, I was told differently by the council, but they are the ones that have questions about businesses. And yes, there are a lot of businesses. When you talk about the businesses, mostly it's hotels, motels, places like that. And yes, these places were built years ago. Like, thank you for, you know, talking about businesses being grandfathered, because my family also had homes that were built here years ago. So, it's very tricky, especially in a area like Westlake, where very few of us have an acre large lot. So, you know, this doesn't, shouldn't apply to us. We, we were here for decades before anyone even heard of Indian City. And so, it's very confusing, and I think a lot of the older businesses have the very same problem. And actually, he was saying not names, names, but I mean, it is Rich Olson, who was very concerned about why are these setbacks happening to me? Well, Darlington's has been there forever. You know, I, my grandfather and my father were around when Darlington's was there. I went there as a little girl and I'm in my seventies. So, yes, they should be special and unique. We have a lot of the same problem living here on, we always call it the outlet, but technically it's the Sycamore River. But my sister and I's homes are on the river. Now, as you know, after the dam was put in, water levels have changed a lot. So, there was a time before the dam went in where we were going more than like a little trickle, like the LA River during dry seasons, and then it would really fill up. Since the dam came in, it's very deep. So, I'm sure our houses aren't legal in terms of the water during the rainy season. They come up very close to where our homes are. You know, my sister, Janita, had a real problem, because she wanted to, she had applied, um, to add a foot or two to her, her deck. And, um, because the water level had risen so much, she was, she paid four hundred dollars to be told, knowing you may not add a foot to your deck, but it seems like someone could have said that right off the bat. Um, so it, yeah, when you were talking about people are concerned with oversight and being interfering, especially people who've just been here for ages, um, we just would like to, you know, live in peace. And I agree with you, the new people coming in need to think about these things. And of course, we have to worry about the safety and the, the quality of our water and our natural resources. So, that's all good. And I'm a little confused about the ADU talk, because I thought it had already been established that you could have a, a toilet or a kitchen. Because I said, oh, that's great. And it was actually members of the council who brought that up too. And I don't know, you don't want me to name names, but I know at least a couple of them. Said, well, they had like a large property over a garage or something where, well, if I can't, you know, I have a toilet there or a little kitchen for when my son or my in-laws come. So, I mean, some of these things were brought up by council members themselves, because as you know, not a lot of citizens come to meetings anymore.
We were talking about auxiliary dwell in ADUs.
Maybe.
On good, yeah. And this is, or supplies to like a bare lot, putting one of those out prior to a residence. The other discussions about ADUs, yes, those were done. This is just one scenario.
Okay, maybe that's where I'm confused.
You're just construting those two things.
This was just a bare lot, putting a.
Like a shed.
A shed prior to a residence.
Okay.
That's all that matters.
But they were also pointing out, if I'm living there, and like you say, some people, you know, can't afford to bring in a big construction.
And that's where we, we, we discussed that if you're building something over two hundred square feet, you have to get a building permit, which is, requires a plot plan that says where the water's coming from, where your sewer and stuff is.
Okay, maybe that's where the confusion came in, but, because I've heard it said we could do things and then we can't do things.
You can do things, but if, if you're, if you're putting water and a toilet in, you have to have a plan. You can't just do that on your own. You have to go through Lane County for a septic plan. And you're doing that with the planning commission and making sure that it's safe, it's sanitary for your neighbors.
Yeah. And my other question is just, you had talked about, you know, trying to, you're almost ready to present this to the council.
No, we didn't say that.
Oh, I thought you were saying you're getting your.
Not to present.
Well, I just want to know if there's a list yet. I'd love to see the list, because I'd like to be able to participate and understand what you're asking about.
Here's your list.
Yeah, let me answer. As I've explained to you and your sister on a couple of occasions now, there is no hardened list. If you are very, very interested in seeing what changes have been discussed, you are more than welcome to look at the minutes that start in around September of 2023, to date.
Okay.
Uh, staff has been very careful about listing, um, a good discussion and the exact changes to which we've agreed. So, if you review the minutes, which are all online.
I bought a lot of those. I spent twenty-seven dollars.
You will see exactly what changes have been made at various different times. That's your list for now.
And, yeah, which we can.
Otherwise, it's like our, our notes in here or there, yeah.
I understand, and I did that like a year or so ago, and I bought all the minutes, but it cost me twenty-seven dollars. And I guess that's what I might have to do again if I want to actually know. Because I'm not, like, you, you take shorthand, that's great, you could do that. I don't get everything written down and my memory isn't so great that I remember.
The minutes are really, really a good spot to see each of those discussions at the meetings, yeah.
I have noticed, because I go to the meetings and I, I can take notes, that sometimes the minutes don't actually reflect what was said and done at the meeting. It's just a, an abridged version. So, and I know it would be impossible to get it all down, but, um, that's where sometimes I hear things that I never see in the minutes again, or things are said.
Uh, well, minutes are another conversation. Is there anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you very much. I just, I just, when there is a list, I'd love to know, and I will go by minutes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item of business, unscheduled items, not on the agenda. Again, think about, uh, for MA, um, what you might want to, uh, do, um, later in the summer, um, as far as training or other projects or interesting discussions, field trips to brief islands.
Yes.
Anything like that, so.
I'd love to see it. I know we talked about it during this past summer, but that would be really good.
And also think about if we have no immediate, um, permits to review and, uh, we're not quite ready, uh, not quite finished with staff's work and any further steps for chapter one fifty-five, we can even decide not to meet. So, think about, uh, all of that kind of stuff.
Okay.
We'll talk about it next month. That's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
One second.
Well, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, as always.
Well, I'm gonna leave this here, my extra clips that I've accumulated, so you can have them back.